I guess we're ready to start again. So, go ahead Jeff, tell us about final plat approvals.
All right, good evening Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council members. For the record, Jeff Tate, Assistant Director of Community Development Services. What I've prepared for presentation this evening is on page 11 within your packet, 11 of 43. And I'll just provide a couple minute background on what's before you and what option City Council has for considering a future process modification for the subdivision review and approval procedures. Real quick background, on April 27th, the Governor signed into law Senate Bill 5674. Senate Bill 5674 is attached in your packet, so hopefully you had a chance to look that over. But it's a pretty quick administrative option that is presented for any local municipality to consider, and it's an optional process amendment. What SB 5674 does is it modifies Chapter 5817 of the Revised Code of Washington. 5817 is the state statute that outlines how subdivisions are to be processed in the state of Washington. Subdivisions, generally speaking, go through four stages of review and consideration before home building begins. I've outlined those in the memo, but real quickly, the first phase is a preliminary plat approval. And a preliminary plat approval is where the city evaluates the higher level conceptual ideas behind a subdivision, looking at environmental impacts, looking at general layout, looking at conditions of approval for a preliminary plat. And a preliminary plat is, once you go through the process with the city, ultimately it's the hearing examiner that makes a decision on preliminary plat approval. And the hearing examiner will look at staff's report. Staff comes up with a recommendation, staff comes up with recommended conditions that are based upon our analysis of the code and engineering design standards, things of that nature. And once the hearing examiner issues that preliminary plat approval, it enters into the second phase of review, which is civil review. That's where you get into the very fine level detail of engineer design, like roads, water, sewer, storm, public landscaping, public lighting, things of that nature. So you get into a very detailed level of review. And once you get through that process and your civil engineer drawings meet all of the city's standards, you move into the third phase, which is construction. Not construction of the homes, but construction of the plat. So building the roads, installing the utilities, installing the lighting, the sidewalks, and the landscaping. Once you make it through that part of the process, and it's determined by the city construction inspectors that construction meets all of the requirements that were laid out in the civil plan approval, then that enables you to apply for a final plat approval. And that's that last phase where SB 5674 provides the city now with an option for modifying its procedures. Currently, and consistent with state law, final plats are presented to City Council under ordinance. City Council's used to seeing final plats come before for action by City Council. And what SB 5674 does, it allows that to be shifted to an administrative process. Part of the reason that that option exists, I think, is because we're not unique, Auburn's not unique, many jurisdictions use that hearing examiner process to go through preliminary plat approval. It's a quasi judicial setting and decision making process. That's where your public hearings are held, public input is provided. And then, once you get through that, of course, you go into the construction phase. So, by the time a final plat approval, a final plat application is submitted to the city, it's gone through that hearing examiner process, and the plat's been built. It really is now moving into the ability to build homes. So I think that one of the things the state legislature did, the law that the Governor signed a month ago or so, is to allow that last step to move into an administrative process. Again, purely optional, but something that we figured that since it's a recent legislative action, it's important to brief City Council and make you aware of that option.
Are there any cities who still keep the preliminary plat approval at the council level rather than the hearing examiner?
Yes.
Name a couple.
I don't know off the top of my head. I know that there's a large number of jurisdictions, counties and cities, that still keep preliminary plat with City Council, or include the Planning Commission. There's a number of ways that you could facilitate that process.
Does ours take it through the Planning Commission?
No.
Well, you know, that was why I didn't enthusiastically behind moving quasi judicial to the hearing examiner, ever was 10 years ago. Because citizens want to come and talk to their elected officials, and there isn't any opportunity for that, the way we structured them. But we got brow beaten into it by WCIA, that if we kept doing quasi judicial at the council level, we're going to have lots of lawsuits. And they gave us examples of where that was happening, and contingent sections that did that. So we sent it all back to the hearing examiner, and essentially, South Thumner knows that ours constituents about their ability to talk to us. So, while this proposal makes sense in our current setup with the hearing examiner, I still don't like the whole process very much. Okay, who's next?
Right, right here. I like this idea, shorten it. So, what percentage savings do you think by doing this method and going directly to Mayor, Department Director level? What are we going to save?
So, there are...
I read, I read this, but what percent? You gonna, you gonna cut it by 30%, 40%?
Well, final plat, so if you break, so looking at all four phases or looking at the final phase, you're, you're cutting the final phase by about 30 to 40% of the time.
Okay, good, thank you. So, I, your question, should staff prepare code amendments to Chapter 17.12? I think we should.
Want to answer your questions, John?
I concur.
So Jeff, when, when would the City Council be apprised of the action of what's going on here?
For each individual subdivision?
Yeah, if we, if we, are we only saying that the final plat administrative authority is just limiting the council in that final ordinance process? Or are we not looking at phases one, two, and three? I mean, how do we know what's happening and how's it brought to us?
Yeah, so currently, City Council, other than, so there's formal and informal awareness. So in terms of procedural elements of city code and moving through that process, City Council is not involved in preliminary plat, it's not involved in civil review, it's not involved in construction, it's only involved in final plat. So, if you remove City Council from final plat action, City Council does not have any involvement in land subdivision. So, but then there's the informal procedures, in terms of the standard operating procedures we put into place, to make sure the council is aware of any development activity that's occurring in the city.
I think that would be, my concern is that at least we have the information and understanding of what's happening on the plats, because in a process where somebody could and may come to us asking us a question on a plat, we wouldn't be prepared to address it or answer it unless we had the information, nor would be prepared to actually take any action if the final plat process is removed from the council. I'm not disagreeing with that, saying that I think we need some safeguard measures in place that allow the council to be briefed and aware, and so if questions come about, we can answer them.
Look, yeah, I think we could figure out a way for us to be informed without answering them in the vote. And one thing that makes me think this is favorable is I don't think we've ever denied a final plat, or even made any changes to it. And so I think it's, it's an unnecessary step, and we can save 30% of 60 days, or wherever it is, you know, several weeks of time for the business committee.
Yeah, I, I like the streamlining process overall, because that's a big benefit no matter what. And I was telling the Mayor earlier today, that last Friday at the Affordable Housing Advisory Board meeting, putting together the Housing Response Team's letter to the Governor answering the question the Governor posed as to why we have a lack of affordable housing in the state, the root causes of that. One of the recommendations from the Subcommittee was to look at a number of streamlining effects that could take place on the local jurisdiction level. So I think anything we can do to shorten the time, and allow those who are putting developments in place to get them in place sooner, I'm proponent of that.
And doing those streamlining is a series of small steps, like this is a small step. But I agree with you that we need to put in place some kind of formal way for us to be aware, even though not voting. And we don't want that to add time to it. We just want to, when you send out the final approval to the hearing examiner, copy us.
And I think, I think that's a real important milestone, is when you get to, actually the preliminary plat approval or the civil plan approvals, because that's where you're going to start seeing activity on property, and that's where you're going to get questions from constituents about what's happening in the community. So I think, while final plat City Council's involved in, in many ways, when final plat is before City Council, so much has already happened on the property. So, I mean, trees have been removed, grading has occurred. So, it's a, it's a better milestone, just in terms of communicating project activity, to frontload that anyway, for council's benefit.
Constituents will like that part of it. Other comments or questions for Jeff? And I guess you'll be bringing us a change for on Monday, or what was it?
Well, I, one detail that I left out is that the state law that went into effect doesn't allow cities to put this into effect until July 23rd. So my intention was to bring it forward to Council Study Session on June 12th, Council Action June 19th, for effective date of July 23rd.
Any trouble with that schedule?
No, we'd like to see you proactive like that. Nice job.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got the Capital Status Report, and as you've probably seen, it's about 10 large pages. I think I want to allow people to talk about any one of them they want to, and pretty much any detail they want to, but I think we're just going to turn from one page to the next, and we'll say, you got questions?
Okay.
If the questions go on too long, I'll probably get them off. So let's start with our first page, which is Government's Corridor Improvement, 277.
Mayor, hi. Could I interrupt for one minute? We do have a presentation that we could lead through, and then we have a summary of some of these key projects that are under construction. It might help facilitate the discussion, but we can go through the spreadsheet at the same time. So, Council, my name is Jacob Sweeting, your Assistant City Engineer, and this is Ryan Vontrak, Capital Projects Manager. And like you already said, we're here tonight to give you a Capital Projects Task Report, so just give you a summary of some of all the construction you see happen out there, and give you an update of what's coming up in the future. So this presentation unfortunately is not in your packet right now, so maybe if you turn towards the screen. Just a summary of where we've been in past years compared to today, as far as capital projects. You can see that, go back in 2012, we put out about $24 million worth of capital projects, and through the years, that's varied, but actually it's steadily grown. And then we get to the last year, which we were very high at about 38 million, and then this year, we're at about 42.5 million. And some of that increase does have to do with some of the larger projects that have been recently constructed, such as the community center last year. And then this year, we have a couple of big projects which really started last year and then continued into this year, like the West Main Street project and the 277th project that you just mentioned. So as we sit right now, the Capital Projects Group in Engineering has 34 active capital projects that's, that are either under construction or under design. 18 are in construction, 16 are being designed. We plan on advertising an additional nine projects this year for construction. This year, the total number that I mentioned, about $42.5 million, consists of just over $32 million worth of transportation projects, another $9 million in utility projects, which breaks out roughly to $4 million in water, a little less than a million in sewer projects, and $4.4 million of storm drain utility projects.
In the future, I think it might be helpful to see how many years that 42 million, 42... we didn't do it all in 2017.
Correct, that number does represent the total value of the projects that will be completed.
With that, of course, but I think just for us to understand the time it takes, and for citizens to understand how long it takes to do these big projects, next time you show us one of these, give us some of the milestone costs.
Got it. And then about a million dollars' worth of projects that fall into other categories. So now we'll move into actually looking at some of the detail of the projects, and we have, Ryan will go through, present some pictures of the city map of some of the larger projects that are under construction. And you could follow along in your matrix as well, because the first project starts on the first page. So each of the projects, on the first screen, it will tell you what page that I'm on, and interrupt as we go. But last time I was here, I mentioned I'd bring in some photos. I'd love to show you a ton of photos, but that would take a lot of time, so I kind of chose a couple of highlight photos of each of these specific projects. So, to start off, we have the Auburn Way South Corridor Safety Improvement Project, and this project is constructing improvements on Auburn Way South from the Mukulchut Plaza to Dogwood Street. And some of the major components of this is widening the project to accommodate turn lanes and U-turns and sidewalks, and then we're constructing signal improvements and also some ADA improvements.
Can we ask questions as they go?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead then, I'll follow you. Go ahead.
Could you go back on that map? On Dogwood and Auburn Way, right there where you have the two gas stations, are you guys going to close? Because there's been, there's a left turn to go down Dogwood, and there's two ways to go into that gas station. There's been several almost reared ends, because people are stopping to turn into the gas station and not going forward, and people behind them think they're going through the light. Are you guys closing any of those driveways?
Yes, we're closing one of the driveways at the, at the gas station.
And are you putting a medium in there?
It'll be sidewalk.
No, no, in the middle, so no one can, can try to turn?
C-curve.
Okay.
Yes, so, so a couple of things happening there. Not only will we be closing one of the driveways, but there will be access for U-turn. So we did acquire some property from that gas station to allow us to widen the road and put the U-turn in. And in doing that, yes, there will be a C-curve extension that helps manage that.
Okay, all right.
Coming and turning and cutting through.
Thank you, because that is, that's a mess in that area. Thank you.
How frequently does Desiree Hayes talk with you about the tribe's interests in this?
Desiree? We're in, we're in contact with her and, and others at the, at the tribe quite a bit.
Did they have any trouble with it? Because they were grumbling a lot at first about the left turns into the casino.
You know, we've, we've coordinated with the casino management and the tribe directly to come up with what we think has a lot of safety benefits, and still taking into account the access that they need to have in the operations.
Good, because it is, it was a real safety problem.
Okay.
Billy, you got another question?
I didn't have a question yet. So the total budget, it's only 5 million for all this? Really?
Yes.
That's a question, you guys.
Yes, it is. Yes.
God. So, I, I drove up there last week toward Enamclaw, going up Enamclaw. And give me four or five benefits for this project.
Someday it'll be finished.
Four or five benefits, because...
The first, what I have, I think is one of the great ones, is pedestrian safety. The sidewalks are being reconstructed and widened, there's going to be lighting put in place, so pedestrians are going to be much better off than they are now. It's going to, this vehicle safety at the intersections will be greatly reduced, because you have replaced traffic signal equipment that has better controls and connects us back to our traffic management center. We also have reduced congestion, because we can move cars through the whole corridor much quickly and much more efficiently than they are now, with things like the dual lefts into the casino, allows us to keep that light moving, traffic moving at their pace. What am I, a three?
Yeah, you're a three.
Some of the access management as well, like the U-turn I mentioned, limiting some of the turns, closing driveways where it makes sense and where we can, that's, that's another issue. And also coming, when you're heading north on Riverwalk and you get to the intersection at Auburn Way South, right now, you have a combined turn lane and through lane, that'll be separated out, so we have an extra lane out there to have all the travel directions moving separately.
So this is a huge benefit for MIT.
I, I think it is a huge benefit for all, including MIT.
I don't see any funding by them.
So, so...
Why, why is that?
This, this project was mainly funded through a state and federal grant. You have to remember that last year, we had two big projects just further to the east, which was from Dogwood to Hemlock, which has significant funding partnerships from the tribe.
The City of Auburn has put in, in a little over 2 million, and federal government, and so we've got nearly 3 million by the government and state. I would have thought that MIT, we would have gotten them to, I thought we talked about this once.
We did, because they wanted some different things than we had designed, but I think we finally persuaded them our design was okay. They, all, I think all they were talking about was maybe paying for some extra stuff they wanted, not for what we're actually building.
Because this is, to me, is a huge benefit for them.
Well, it's for everybody.
Yeah, I understand that, but they're the big everybody out there.
Last year's, last year's projects, as Jacob was saying, did have significant MIT contributions to it. Certain phases will have MIT contributions, certain phases won't.
So did they give up any land for this project?
There's no land required for this one.
Oh, okay.
There on River Row, as you're going down, how far is that sidewalk going to go to? Because that's a dangerous area, people are walking through there and...
We are just, it's actually not going very far, it's just stopping just beyond the improvements that we're doing at the sidewalk. We'd like to extend the further, and we have a project in the books where we're trying to find funding for that. And we have had discussions with the tribe, looking for some possible opportunities there.
Okay, next highlight?
So a couple of the construction progress that's going on out there right now, we don't have, you know, we just, kind of just got underway with this project, so we're only about 20% in. But here are a couple of photos of the embankment construction that is widening, starting to widen Auburn Way South right in front of the casino. So the, the picture on the left is the trucks dumping in some of the material, and then you got the guy rolling it, compacting the material. Picture on the, on the right is that general same area after they've filled in a lot of the embankment.
You know, one thing I'd like to get from you on information to Bill's point, what's the traffic count of casino versus everything else? I guess it's like 5% and 95%, but I'd, I'd like to see that kind of number, so that if it's 50/50, I'd probably be talking like Bill's, hey, why aren't they giving something? So, do you have that kind of number? Traffic counts there by, by destination?
I'm not, I'm not sure if we do. We may have modeling based on estimated number of trips, but I'm not sure if we have an actual count.
Well, even that would be helpful, just let us know which it is, whether it's a model or, or a count.
So I just wanted to clarify, so we don't have actual counts into the casino, because we would have to go onto the tribal property to do those counts, but we are working with a consultant to try to get some of those counts. Part of this has to do with the compact agreement with MIT as well, which is another opportunity for them to partner on projects such as this, that are serving the casino, is through the compact process.
What about tracking people's cell phones? You know, that's becoming a way to determine destinations. Are we allowed to do that through some agency that knows how?
So we don't have any equipment out there right now that can do that, that I am aware of. What I have seen from WashDOT, who has done similar things like that, is using the Bluetooth connectivity, which requires that drivers actually have that Bluetooth turned on and active as they're going through the site. So, it gives you some data, but it's definitely dependent upon the users actually having that turned on.
Makes me wonder about the data that our economic development consultants gave us based on cellphone tracking.
Well, we're also going to start getting the traffic from the casinos, I mean, from the White River Theater. They're going to start doing concerts and everything, and I can see it being backed up. Will you be done here within a couple of months?
We, we will be under construction during the concerts, however, the contractor will not be working on concert nights.
Okay, keep going.
Yeah, this, this project is actually going to be running through, or projected to run through December of this year, construction wise. So the next photo is, is the Riverwalk, sorry, sorry, the Riverwalk where we have the roadway closed at nighttime right now, and they're finishing up that work hopefully this week. That's where they're installing some storm drainage and water improvements. So the photo on the left is just a photo of, of Riverwalk. Like I said, it's not, not much to see here, but that's really what they've been working on the last couple of weeks.
Storm drainage is important, because it's real quick to run down there during rainstorms.
Historical Mukulchut Indian Tribe water gathering place that they're sensitive to.
Speaking of that, you heard him talking about it at the council meeting, what, what action, if any, are you taking any differently now that they've emphasized how important that is to them historically?
Well, it's, so after the conversation that we had at the tribal, the global meeting with the tribe, where a concern, or I guess rather an awareness was raised about some springs that occur along Riverwalk Drive, we did look into it a little more, and we, we think that those are mainly occurring along the, the west side of the road, which we really weren't impacting or, or having anything on this project with. But as we move forward with potential sidewalk extension down Riverwalk, that would be a consideration.
And my guess is the tribe would contribute some to that if we could make it happen. Reserve those train, trainings, or in fact, at the global meeting, they even mentioned maybe making it a, a destination of interest as a historical site. So I hope you're taking all that to heart as you think about what you're going to do on the west side.
So we're going to move on from Auburn Way South project, and we'll stay on the same page, page one, and hit the South 277th Corridor Improvement Project. So this project is widening South 277th from Auburn Way North to L Street. And, I'll actually hit the next picture. So, this is a photo looking in the east direction, and within the widened section, the contractor has installed the majority of the storm that we were installing along South 277th. There's a couple of catch basins there that they need to install. Outside of that, they're just about done. The picture you're looking at here is their construction entrance that's just beyond the Chevron that is there, and you're looking at the widening section and the, where those big pieces of metal that are off to the right-hand side, that's the extent of the widening where the trail will hit. The rest of the, the area in there will all be the new driving surface. If you go to the next photo.
There'll be bicycle lanes on that?
It's a, it's a shared Class 1 separated trail, so it'll be both bicycles and pedestrians. This is the photo looking in the west direction... This is the photo looking in the west direction, just beyond about L Street. And it gives you a little bit of a better picture of where the trail is. If you can see the raised dirt, the preload section that's on the, kind of in the middle of the screen there, that's where your, that's where your trail is gonna be. And then just to the right of that is the, the new pavement surface. This photo is looking directly at the new stormwater pond and relocated stream that the contractor is just now getting underway. You can see the, kind of the, the water mark in there that's kind of wavy. That's the first signs of the relocated stream. And just to the right of that will be the new stormwater pond for the entire project.
Is that a salmon stream?
It is possibly, yes. It is built for that, yes. So, so the stream designated potential fish passable, or build, the culvert that we're building is a fish passable culvert. The stream will have habitat or items in it like wads and things that will support salmon. If they do migrate with it, what's that?
Culvert.
Oh, it's huge.
Twenty foot?
It's just under what we would consider a, a bridge.
Kinda like mill pond type, type over there?
At the 5K reach? No, it's, I don't know how large, a little smaller than that. I thought it was 24. Yeah, it's just, I, I don't know why it's escaping me, but it's, it's in it.
I was just curious. But that's good for salmon habitat if, if they remember 20 years ago that, where they came from.
That was, okay, that was it for 277th. Any other questions on that one? So we'll move on to page two of the reports and discuss the Auburn Way North Reservation Project. So this project, we are grinding and overlaying Auburn Way North from 22nd Street Northeast to 45th Street Northeast.
He's done, he's done.
On this one, I have a question on this one. When he's done with this one.
So this project includes some ADA improvements as well as a new traffic signal at 37th. And actually, if you hit the next slide. This project, as far as showing you what kind of construction is going on, is a little difficult. So this was probably the best intersection we could find. This is the intersection of 37th Street Northeast. And if you see to the right, there's new pavement there that is the base course pavement. That's not the full depth pavement as of yet. But to the right, you can see the pavement is all ground off. So if you guys have driven Auburn Way North recently, you'll see that we did grind off the entire pavement for the entire stretch. That made the project construction way more efficient than we typically would, which would be grinding and overlaying lanes one by one. So this gave us some.
Where's all that grinding stuff go?
It, it, they use it for a number of things. They, they haul it off and other agencies will use it or other facilities will use it.
Use it for sub-basement.
Yeah, they, they, they will, yes. That is a new thing that, or the, the new it thing that they're doing nowadays, so. If you hit the next slide.
Nope.
Photo.
Is that on 1507?
No, I have one more picture.
Okay, I have a question. I have a kind of a question and statement. I was driving, this is a week ago approximately, maybe four, five days, six days, at nighttime. And it's, it's well barricaded and, and there's cones all over the place. And I'm familiar with cuts. So, but I was going by there about 10 o'clock at night. And I swear to God, I hit a cut with no blacktop to smooth it out. And I hit it just square. And I thought I was gonna tear off the tires. It was so bad.
You hit a couple of those too. What's the deal?
I sent, I sent an email in. I have never gotten a response back on that, but I was concerned about other people.
Hit it too, and I've got little tires, yeah. It's terrible, startling.
So how can we prevent that from other people hitting straight cuts without any smooth, smooth out?
In my new capacity as a resident of the river, I've traveled that road several times, several days, and it is a mess. It is very bumpy, very misleading. And when cars park over here on, on the curb side here, you have to veer over into the other lane in order to get around them. That was this morning. It just, is there, are there plans to pave that entire street all the way over to I Street? Or is that just what, what we see there is gonna get paved?
On, on what street, 37?
37.
No, 30, so 37th. This picture where you're looking at here, that is the extent of the paving for this project. That is the base course or the, the first lift. They'll, they'll come in and finish, do another lift later on. But that is the, the extent of what you'll see as far as paving that.
Further east, just within a few feet of that cut right there, there's all kinds of dips and things in the, in the road that could cause somebody like driving late at night would hit that and that would, you know.
Yeah. This, the, being a grant-funded project, they, you know, they put in the scope to, to pave Auburn Way North from the stretch. And so the side streets weren't part of the grant. And the only reason we've gone this far is because of the, the traffic loops that are being taken out with the intersection. And so there's temporary video detection at the intersection right now. You can see the cameras on the.
Are there any plans in the future to pave the rest of that up over to I Street perhaps?
I am not sure.
Something to think about. It's really a mess in there. If you haven't driven it, well, you take it, take it on down.
Yeah, I, I happen to live over there as well with Bob, and I drive there every day. And if you're not familiar with the conditions of the road, it becomes very challenging in that area you just showed there. Ryan, the, the grade separation there, although there's a sign that says bump, it should say ledge. Because that's what you hit when you, when you.
Yeah, it is. When I hit it, it's my tires.
And I've seen people kinda get shocked when they're driving over that because you're not prepared for it. So I guess my statement would be is perhaps if we could modify the signage a little bit, where people have a little, you know, slow down bump or whatever. So, because the sign just says bump, that's all it is right now. The other statement I have is, and this is in general on all the projects, the status on all the projects, many of the projects show construction underway or work underway. I'd like to see a little bit more progress report on the status. So for example, I just wrote a note on the Auburn Way North Preservation Project where the status could be something, as an example, grind complete, overlay will commence on such and such a date. Something that gives us a little more definition than just construction underway, construction in progress or work underway.
Suggestion.
Yeah, we can, we can work on that and.
But can I make that? So getting back to those cuts, I think that city inspection should check that out. I really do. I mean, and if the, if the contractor isn't smoothing those out a little bit, you ought to get on them. Because, God, it's, it's not, it's not fun. And I was very, very cautious because it's in a, it's in a construction area. Some of the areas had some blacktop on it. So I assumed, I assumed you guys, that everything was smooth, but it wasn't. And the signage was not good in this one area.
Doug, you had a comment?
I'd say they, and you're right, Bill. They did cross Auburn Way North going, going west and coming east. They did ramp that down where they, where they graded it out and put a little bit of a, of a ramp there where not hitting the edge of the existing pavement. So in some areas, especially along the main, they're, they're doing that. Other areas, it's just left with a raw edge.
I'm gonna interject very quickly. Councilmember, if I took your comments, because they were, they were sent to me and I did for the staff as advisory, so my apologies for not getting back to you. I took them as an advisory email from you to pass on to the team, so my apologies. And I just want to reiterate, I think, what Ryan and Jacob were, is this is iterative construction process. Your feedback is very good. It helps us, we'll pass it on to the construction inspection team. I know I'm speaking to the choir, so please, when I say this, understand that this is an active construction area and we do encourage all our residents, councilmembers and citizens to be very careful driving in there. It is a changing, daily changing situation. So there are gonna be instances. And so having those, that feedback like Councilmember Plaza provided to us about a situation is very helpful because things do change fairly quickly in this active construction area. And it's something that we will, we will make sure to endeavor to, to respond to. So if you do see these or feel these things, and again, so the councilmember, please let us know so that we can make the, the team aware of it and, and address it with the contractor.
Have we been using our big lighted signs up there at all? I've seen them down on Auburn Way South, I think I've seen them on Auburn Way North.
I don't think we have one that says ledge.
I don't believe we've used those there, but we have used them if there's gonna be an upcoming closure or night work in advance. But, you know, this, we own a few of them. Contractors bring them out, but you gotta pay per day, so you try to use them selectively where it makes sense.
Might make sense for these, you know, really abrupt edges.
Right, well, I do wanna just say thank you for the input. Anytime you see a specific issue like that, you can email or call me, Ryan, and we have a direct line to the inspectors. They're out there, they check everything in the morning, they're, they check it in the evening, they check it on Friday before they leave. But the problem with Auburn Way, there's tons of traffic. And so even where they do put the, the wedges in to give you that lip, that nice transition, sometimes it takes one truck to hit it and it'll knock it out. And we don't catch it till Monday, so.
Flagger out there for Bill's purpose. If he's driving around at 10.
I got no worries with that.
Just get it finished by the end of the week and then we're fine.
But, but no, specific feedback, you know, if you see an issue, let us know and we'll do the best we can to address it. And, and we expect that and we hope all citizens would, would do that for us because it's helpful.
Be reported on your gov or on the Auburn, or on the city website or a phone call to you?
Yes. Anyway. But we, we've presented sometimes the capital projects map and that tool, and that actually indicates who the project manager is. The inspectors can be contacted directly through the project managers. There's, there's lots of different ways. But the more specific information we have about an issue that you've seen, the better we can respond and, and take care of it. I actually, you know, we had the, the concern that was raised by Councilmember Plaza. We went out there and we looked, and we looked at all the transitions and they appeared to be fine. So we're scratching our heads saying, well, where was that? We're trying to guess. So if you just, if you help us pinpoint it, we can help.
I was guessing at the area too, because, you know. I, I should have stopped and took a picture.
Sometimes they put about a 45 degree ramp, and that's just not enough, you know.
This was blunt.
10 degrees or something. I think it's in the ramp design too.
So the good news I have for you though is that we are expected to pave the first part of June. So a couple more weeks of this, because they're, they're working on the, you know, at this intersection, they gotta put in the, the new traffic loops and they're doing some electrical stuff and some sidewalk work, and then they'll be able to get the paving, so.
Last comment on this, not for me anyway. You know, the big heavy trucks don't feel those at all, I, I wouldn't think. But smaller, low slung cars, man.
The beast feels it, trust me.
Yeah.
The beast, my truck.
The beast does.
So Ryan, go back up just really quick. So what other signal changes are taking place at that intersection?
At this intersection, this is 37th. We're actually putting in a new traffic signal pole and then traffic loops. And removing the, the, right now, like I said, there's a temporary video detection that's up right now, but, okay.
Okay, next.
Next project, I just want to briefly mention, this, this project was brought to you guys last month. This is the former well field improvement project. It's on page three. The, I don't really have any pictures because I haven't started yet. But they are, we are having the pre-construction meeting, I believe. Oh, this Thursday. So we're gonna get underway with that. In this project, we are installing a couple of new variable speed pumps at the wells two and six and doing some SCADA improvements. And so really exciting project for our water department to get these two critical facilities online. And it was our feature capital project right now. So if you haven't seen the article, take a look at it in the Auburn Magazine. And I just wanted to let you guys know that that one is going into construction here very soon. Go next. That's just an aerial photo of the site. West Main Street, staying on page three. So this project is doing, or actually technically has completed corridor improvements along West Main Street. That includes repurposing the, the roadway and actually kinda doing a road diet where we've taken a four-lane roadway section and brought it to, to three lanes with bike lanes. And then did some ITS improvements along the blue sections that you see on the map, 15th Street, West Valley Highway and West Main as well. If you hit the next slide. I have, this project, I, I thought these, these two photos were really cool. The, the photo on the left is showing the, actually the depth of the excavation that, that took place along West Main Street. And so you can see the existing pavement there, how, how deep that actually was. There was a pretty substantial base that we put in there. That tarp that you see there is the, the geoconstruction textile that's used for separating the, the, the base course from the existing layer of sand and rock that's underneath.
I thought it was maybe to keep the weeds out.
No, it's, it's for separation to keep, to keep the, the material from, from finding.
It looks like you're gonna commune about 12% under. Do we get to keep all that in the city or is the feds want some of it back?
So the grants are reimbursed base, so it's a, it's a pro rate of cost. If it comes in under, then it means some of the grant money may not be spent.
And then I just wanted to show you, the one on the right, we did some, all the pavement work and this project was done at nighttime and they did a really good job. And we were in suspension for a very long time. This was actually a picture taken during the, the base lift that has been sitting there for a few months as we waited a paving window to hit. But it was a lot of work to do at nighttime and long nights. If you hit the next one, here is the finished product. They have not done the, the channelization, the striping. This is all temporary striping right now. They'll go in and, and do this striping here shortly. Next, next slide. And it, actually, the previous slide was looking in the, that'll be in the west direction. And then the next slide is looking in the east direction. Currently, we still have traffic traveling on the south half of the road. Once we get the, all the striping in, then we'll, then we'll open it up. But that project is, is, is near complete. We're working on punch list work and the striping.
As Bill. On the left there, that would be the environmental park area entrance, correct? Are we having, we talked about this before, about parking in front of the, remember? Are we doing any parking there in front of the entrance?
There's a, there's a couple of stalls per se that were, that were put in as part of the project.
And they're gonna stay there then?
You might even be able to see the cutout in there if you really look.
Oh, I can see it now.
So moving on to the M Street Improvement Project. This project, I'm, I really, if you go to page four, another project that we, we spoke about last week, last month. And I really just wanted to, to let you guys know that that one is quickly approaching the construction time. And we are, again, closing M Street from Third Street Southeast to Main Street Southeast. If you go to the next slide, shows the, the detour plan that we are providing. So M Street will be closed from approximately June 26th until up to September 1st. It'll be open back on September 1st. Just wanted to reiterate that again. We're looking forward to getting this project done. But if you have any questions about that, we can talk about it, but, next one. that, we can talk about it, but, next one. Thirtieth Street Storm Improvement Project, this is on page five.
Go back to page four, sure. CP thirteen seventeen, one-three-one-seven.
On the previous page of the report?
It's on page four.
Page four.
It's right after fifteen.
Yes.
This on the water meters? You gonna bring it up?
No, 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 that one is.
Oh, you don't have a slide on that?
I don't have a slide on that one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There have been slides on every one of them.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I do have a question. This is water meter, water meter and billing system improvements. How come we didn't get any federal money on that?
So it's a, it's a water project, and there really aren't any federal funds available for something like that.
Okay, so my next question is, for this type of six million dollar project, what would you feel are the cost savings for the taxpayer?
So this has some fairly significant cost savings. You might remember the almost year-long conversation that we had before we went forward with this project about what some of those benefits were. So by doing the automated metering, it actually allows us to actually see in much more real time what is happening with the water system at those locations and also to identify leaks a whole lot earlier. As we get to the end of this project and we start looking at the customer interface for this, it will also open up the ability for the customers to actually get in and see their water usage on a more of a real-time basis as well.
It hopes that that might cause some water conservation, which saves us a lot of capital money.
So with, are we saving manpower, FTEs, all this?
So we are saving manpower, the, the, the staff that normally do go out and do the meter reading. We are still doing some of that. We're in the middle of this implementation, so there's still meter reading that's currently happening, but those staff will be repurposed to doing other things. What we are seeing is that by allowing us to see when we're actually having leaks, it allows us to be a little bit more proactive with the residents and let them know when we're seeing an issue because we can set up alarms in the system that tells us when something unusual is happening.
So did you guys do a cost savings analysis before we spent six million?
Yes, we did, and we actually discussed that with the council. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but it was.
I don't remember that.
Bill, it was like a two-year conversation.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
They were long-term conversations.
Hey, I don't have the numbers here. So I'm just asking the question. So what do you think we saved? Or can you bring it back? Just let us know?
We can bring it back if, if council wishes. It's, we're not done with the project yet, so what you're going to see is, again, that cost-benefit analysis that we did in making the decision to move forward with the project.
And you didn't do a capital savings analysis in that case, which I grumbled about, and I know you have to do a lot of assumptions about that, but I still think if you are going to try to take some analysis of the savings, although I'm not sure it's worth it, Bill, but we went through it a lot, and I think we, we saw even without the capital savings, it was a payback in less than ten years, and that's, I think, a pretty good deal compared to solar, the thirty-year payback. So I, I think we're pretty well covered if we explain to the citizens that we did vet it, that it does pay back in about ten years in savings and people like FTEs, and it probably pays off a lot faster when you think of building smaller reservoirs, smaller pipes, all that.
There are some people that will see a reduction in their bills because it is a more exact process for measuring the metered water. Some will go up, some will go down because it is a more exacting process.
So do you, do you read the meters from a control station somewhere?
So yeah, so the radio, the meters are all radio, so we actually have some antenna locations that basically pick up all of the radio signals from the meters around the city, and that actually feeds back to maintenance and operations and to our metering system.
So we can tell people there is a, there is a savings?
Yes.
Well, I've probably asked this a couple times over the past couple of years, but what is the life cycle on the new meters?
We went through that in the presentation. I want to say they were like twenty-five years.
And do we know if the technology of the meters is like the old meters where, or a period of time, the old meters have a tendency to slow down, or the, is this technology is better than accurate readings?
This is, this is improved technology over older meters, but that's also because you're getting the real-time information from it, you can see when something is looking odd in that meter reading process for us to then go out and investigate the meter and test it. Whereas right now, the only time that we go out to look at that meter for that type of situation is when a resident calls us with a complaint.
So two more projects that we wanted to highlight. The, first one is on page five, the Thirtieth Street Northeast Improvement Project. This is where we installed a new forty-two inch storm line along Thirtieth Street, down I Street, and then through the alleyway and Bran, Brandon Park to the Brandon Park Storm Pump Station. That project is near complete, and so I, I wanted to show a couple photos of kind of the construction that went on. So this is a, a picture of the pipe installation within the alleyway. You can see the trench boxes, and a guy standing there is a pretty deep storm line, and with it being forty-two inches, it's a very large pipe, so you can see the, the effort that went into installing that particular line. This next photo is kind of a combo photo. On the left-hand side is a trench box for a catch basin, and so a guy standing down there, you can see how, how deep he is to install a, a catch basin, and then the catch basins are eighty-four inches in diameter, and so you can see on the right-hand side, they're lowering one of the, the eighty-four inch catch basins down inside that trench box.
That's actually at the pump station, isn't it?
Yeah, that's at the pump station.
Yep. It almost went down one of my, one of my homeowner association streets. Give you an example, that would have taken almost the whole street out.
Yeah, so that, that.
Had improved drainage as a result of that.
So I see we didn't get any federal money there either. Why not?
So, so this is a, a product that was funded by the Storm Drain Utility, so it's built into the Storm Drain Enterprise Fund.
Yeah, but are we, with federal funds, no, no, on this type of project?
Most of, most of the federal funds that we receive actually go towards transportation type projects.
Okay, so sewer, same with sewer, okay.
So the next photo, next couple photos aren't, aren't too fascinating, but this is the recent photo of the restoration work that's happening in the alleyway, and they're, the last bit of work that we need to do really is the landscape restoration, yard restoration of the, the houses that we impact with and the easement that we were going down. And then this is the final restoration of the, in the Brandon Park, and around the trail. That's looking towards the river looking east. Again, the next photo is the final pavement restoration that took place on Thirty-eth. This is Thirty-eth Street looking towards I Street, final pavement restoration, and then they put back the bike lane that was in there. They also did all the pavement restoration down I Street to the alleyway, so, and then the sidewalks are all brand new as well.
So is that a fire hydrant in the sidewalk? Is it a fire hydrant?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
So because this is all brand new, why couldn't you put that hydrant out of the sidewalk?
We potentially could have, but it would have been an additional cost to relocate the water line that serves it, and when you start.
So at nighttime, someone going by there on a bicycle, they don't see it, bam.
Well, they may be in the bicycle lane, but also the main point on the hydrants is to provide the clearance, so we provide a minimum.
Baby carries at night?
That's kind of what.
God, how much would of cost to get that out of the sidewalk?
Well, it also is that the sidewalk right now, the back of walk is, you know, we're right at the property line, so if you put it out of, beyond the sidewalk, then it'd be, it'd be property impacts.
It would seem to me that, I mean, they're underrunning the contract anyway, so. But does anybody else see some safety feature about that?
Can you give my, my past history of experience with construction management and construction? It's pretty typical. It's something where relocating a water line is not just taking a small section of water line, you're relocating the entire water line. You can't, you can't build a loop in it because then you're distorting the water flow, you'll see, so.
The concrete pad also, the water lines up by my house, they have a concrete pad because that does provide some stability for the infrastructure that sticks up when the fire department uses it. So if I can also point out, so this is also a storm utility project, so the cost to relocate that hydrant, which was not required for the storm improvement, would not be something that we can fund with storm utility money. So it would have taken water utility money to do that.
When we put things in the sidewalk, and I know we put lots of mirrors, headlights, power poles, but we put lots of signs there too, actually fairly far out into the sidewalk that could be running into the. Why wouldn't we put one of those signs warning people of the oncoming fire?
Fire hydrant ahead.
So typically what we're doing for any sidewalk is we're looking for a minimum width for the pedestrian walking area, and as long as you meet those minimum clearances, whether it's a sign, a light pole, a fire hydrant, we don't necessarily sign for that narrower.
That's one of your better lines, though.
I'll be honest, if, if we're going to sign for that, I probably need about twenty thousand signs to deal with the issues around the city.
Okay, next.
Okay, so that's it for this project, and then, then we have the, the H Street Extension Project, and so this is a really cool project. We're creating an access to the Les Gove Campus off Auburn Way South by extending H Street into the parking lot and providing.
Page, sir?
Oh, this is on page five, I apologize.
Back to the bottom.
And so extending H Street and providing a driveway access off Auburn Way South, and then closing Deals Way, so it's a more efficient way of getting people to Les Gove Campus.
Safer.
Safer way as well. So, and then we did parking lot modifications to the parking lots adjacent to the, the library. Next slide. These photos are very fresh, and so they almost look like a rendering because they're, they're, it's just so clean, but this is the, a photo looking north from Auburn Way South. This is the new entrance into the library, and then you'll see the, the H Street Extension there, kind of in the distance. The next photo will show you more of the, there's the, the A Street Extension. This is looking south, so you have some pedestrian access there and a one lane in each direction, it's very well lit, from the pavement markings, brand-new pavement markings that are in there, and all the brand-new sidewalks on both sides. Next.
On the entry of that road to Auburn Way South, is it right out only?
To, no, it is not.
Not currently, no.
Next photo, here's kind of a side-by-side. Hopefully you can see this. I, I didn't have a, a before photo, but this was, the one on the left is taken off the Bing website from the maps, so that was the old Deals Way that had provided a through, and this is, this is actually the same photo. The one on the right is where we closed off Deals Way, and you can see the, that's kind of a roundabout there, and you see the three bollards that have closed it off.
You're not going to put signs warning people about those?
Just trying to help you there.
We're on it. Here's a, here's a close.
Oh, there they go.
Here's a closer up, a look of the bollards. This is actually from the other angle, this is looking north, and that's the library on the, on the left-hand side there, so.
Maybe right there with your ledge.
You could run over it with your truck.
Big bird, that's a beast.
So that is the end of the photo presentation.
Are you going to cover any more of these?
So we can. I was just going to touch on briefly, we have a long list, there's approximately.
I have a couple of questions.
So do I.
Okay, well, the, the list here is just the nine additional projects that will be going into construction here within the next three to four months. So if there are any specific questions on these or other projects, we can answer those, or I could run through briefly what each one of these are if you'd like.
Let's see F Street on there. Are you going to cover it somewhere else?
F Street, the F Street Non-Mortarized Improvements between Auburn Way South and Fourth. So that is listed on the matrix as a design project, and currently it's in the design phase. Will soon be entering the, the right-of-way, the property acquisition phase. That was a project that did slide approximately a year. One year in the funding cycle on PSRC, with the, how some of their funding was, was slid around.
Yes, on page six of twelve, Hundred and Fourth Avenue Southeast Building Demolition. I thought I saw in some other documents that it was fifty-six thousand, and here I see it's a hundred thousand.
So, so I think what you saw was the contract amount for the demolition itself, which was in the fifty to sixty thousand dollar range. That was on board of that contract more than likely. There was additional work involved with that, which was the, the asbestos and hazardous material abatement, as well as the survey of that material and the design work and administration that went into it.
Just curious, thanks.
That same one. So why did we demolish those buildings now?
Because they're nasty.
The decision to either keep them or demolish them really is a property management decision, where you have to weigh into the safety and the security and the cost of maintaining those buildings in a secure environment. Keeping the boards up, that constantly get torn down, that provides opportunities for things you don't want happening.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and that's one of the things that Wayne Osborne, what he was famous for when he was on the council. He liked it when we had property that we weren't going to use for anything, that we, we cleared away so that it doesn't become an attractive nuisance. And I've been driving by that location for ten years, and in the last two years, it's, it was just waiting for some number of people to move in and start a fire or something.
Same page, last item, fourteen oh seven, Marchini Meadows. What caught my eye was in the description, they did not complete certain things. So tell us about that.
Sure. So the Marchini Meadows development was actually one that was done under King County's jurisdiction, and it's one of those that we inherited from King County. So there were several things that the developer did not do, and that King County did not require them to complete before they allowed them to start building homes. So the city actually went through a process with the developer to gain as much funds as we could to go towards finishing.
Need, need to say anymore. I understand. Big seven?
Big seven.
Fifth item, East Ridge Manor Storm Improvement. Can you explain the purpose of that?
So, so the, the project itself will take some of the, the storm drains that, from the neighborhood up above the golf course area, that currently comes down through some ditches and through storm drain line and into a pond, and then comes over the hill and take that and actually put it into a closed system and bring it down, down to the golf course.
Control.
Yes.
To reduce instability.
Yes, it's, it's to reduce potential instability of the slope caused by water running over.
Makes sense, thank you. The next item is fourteen oh six, same page, Main Street Signal Upgrades. Is, is this right by the agri shop?
Yes.
Okay, so that's been a problem, has it, hasn't it? Is this truck radius? Is this going to fix that? Didn't we have a problem? Didn't we have a problem there before?
This is just gonna be signals.
Well, I know, the signals, I, I can read it, but. I can read that it's for signals.
So the, the concern I think you have is on the northwest corner? Is that the corner that you're thinking of in the sign shop?
Some of the shops there were complaining about.
Yes.
The left turn lane going west on Main.
No, I think it was.
It's typically the right turn lane, coming southbound on C, going to west on Main. The issue there is in order to fix that, you would have to purchase and modify the building. So that is not included in the cost for the signal upgrade.
Is it included anywhere in this package?
That is not currently included in any transportation program for, for that particular piece. What this is doing is trying to address, if you may recall, that signal currently has a, an odd configuration in that we have the mast arms coming out at an angle into the intersection, which puts some of those signal heads really close to where the stop bars are for east and west traffic. So this is actually modifying those into what you would see a more standard signalized situation.
So there's still gonna be complaint about that left turn lane because it's not in any project.
Who's complaining?
Couple of merchants there.
The, the trucks, we have, we have prohibited the trucks from turning.
Okay.
In that area, and that was done about three years ago.
Yeah, I remember some, so that's what I'm trying to find out.
With the trucks prohibited from turning down that way, that's, that's reduced or eliminated.
So trucks can't turn.
The trucks can't turn in that, no.
They can't, they can't make that right turn.
Okay, so they're.
The signage is up for that.
Okay, all right, so that's not a problem anymore then. Thank you. Page eight. Last item, fifteen thirteen, Twenty Second Street Northeast and I Street. That's a roundabout, right? How come you don't identify it as roundabout in your description?
We certainly could have.
I mean, we should be proud that we're putting a roundabout in that area. I'm sure the traffic engineers are, but the drivers may not be.
Yes, so we can add that into the description here. What you need to remember is when we first envisioned this project, we were looking at what the intersection improvements were. So part of that was studying whether a roundabout made sense there or whether there were other intersection improvements to make, so.
Well, it makes sense.
Try to avoid containing that in the name.
It makes sense, doesn't it?
Again, after going through the preliminary design, the roundabout is what's chosen, so we can add that to the description.
Yeah, we should add roundabout.
See the article in the Auburn Magazine.
Now you guys, yeah, I read that, I read that. So you guys live right there, don't you?
Down the street, on the street.
Yeah. You should be happy of going in.
Any other questions?
On page nine, you go to B Street and the Road Street and Trucks Project. Is this area, was it part of the LID that we did there about ten years ago? And then we're having to redo it, huh?
That's way more than ten years ago because I'm pretty sure we were finishing that up, if not done with it before I started twenty years ago.
Oh, my goodness.
You gotta catch up, Rich.
Okay, that was a long question. I have, I have one, Rich. The last item on that page, sixteen seventeen Lee Hill PRV State. What's PRV, you guys?
Pressure Reducing Valve.
Should have figured that out.
So I wanted, just to make a note on that project briefly, is we will be bringing a resolution to council involving that project where we are going to procure those PRVs directly from GC Systems, which is our vendor that we utilize for all our PRVs. Since this project is over bid limits, it does require us to bring a resolution to council to authorize actually going directly to that company without a competitive bid hitting the advertisement.
So, so along those lines, there's a lot of high pressure up in that area, correct? Water pressure?
So, so this is not necessarily addressing high pressure, but it's addressing the different pressure zones that exist as you go up in elevation into the hill locations. So this is how you maintain adequate pressure as you change that elevation.
Thank you, appreciate it. Page ten. Page ten, last item there, CP XXXX. This is South Hangar Row Three Door Improvement. Waiting budget availability to begin. So, so we need seventy-three thousand dollars, is that what we need?
So at the end of twenty sixteen, from the previous hangar door improvements that were done, this is another piece to that. There was seventy-three thousand remaining in the budget for that project. However, that carry forward has not been done yet.
So what is that?
So it's sitting in the ending fund balance for the airport right now.
So we can use the funds?
It needs to be budgeted. It needs to be budgeted, which means it needs to go through a budget amendment.
Okay, so that should.
In order for us to do the work this year.
My guy, let's work it.
Budget amendment.
It's not available for other work, it's available for this. It just needs to be rolled forward into this year's budget.
So council member bag it, let's push that.
When it comes forward, we will address it.
So when do you think it's gonna come forward for an amendment?
I'm, I'm gonna have to defer that to Director Coleman on when the next budget would happen.
So the budget amendment two will be coming forward with all ending fund balances. So that will be June, July timeframe.
God, me, you can't fix this. I've got a question on page eleven. Well, wait a minute, I'm not done yet.
Who's running this meeting?
Hey, you just hush up over there, you're already in trouble. Until they said, I'm still there. I wanna know why we can't move the door improvements on Row Three at the south hangar, get it going. Because we've had some design problems on that door and this will fix that type of a problem, so it's, so the tenants can use it efficiently.
So this is ending fund balance. The process is always, ending fund balances get rolled forward in budget amendment two, which typically takes place in June or July timeframe.
Well, what if this council wanted to authorize seventy-three thousand dollars ahead of that?
It would be a budget amendment and it would have to go through the process and it would probably take through June at least to get that budget amendment.
That doesn't make sense.
Did the budget amendment for the previous repairs that we did on the hangars, did we have to do a budget amendment for that? That was in VA one. We did. And how, and that, how long did that take us? So the first budget amendment of the year, these are scheduled budget amendments. The first budget amendment of the year that you had Shelley up here explaining all of them to you for a couple of hours. That's the first process that we go through every year. The second one is after the audit, after the year end closing and all of the, all of the year end fund balances have been identified. And then they all come forward. It's not an overnight process to bring all of those forward. So our budget department, our accounting department has been working on that and it will all come forward. They're in the audit process right now. And so it's always during this timeframe that the second budget amendment comes forward to true up the.
What about emergency funds?
Emergency funding is different.
It was, it was a emergency approval. Get it done, so.
Yeah, for the, yeah.
So, so that was also a declared emergency by the council and this would probably not meet the definitions of a declared emergency.
Yeah, but look, this is why I'm kinda upset about everything here. It says improved performance. We've spent, I think, two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars to fix that problem. No, 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 I'm sorry, that's not, that was the overhead beams, that was the beams. But these doors, the tracks, there was some design problem on the tracks. So the more you use, the more you push this thing, the more we're apt to harm the, the.
So I, I do wanna point out that to deal with some of those issues, we've actually done some temporary work out there to address some of the immediate needs. So it, it's not a pressing issue for us to go out and do this. So waiting for the budget amendment is, is not delaying anything significantly.
It's not a safety hazard, in other words, or a wear hazard.
Not currently, no.
It won't do any harm.
Not with.
It won't, so you're saying it will not do any harm by waiting? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we, with AMG, we have taken care of the most pressing concerning areas that we have.
So we will not do any harm to the current construction?
Well, when did you first become aware of this? Because you know the hangar situation had been reported by AG for four years before we found out here that everything was collapsing. So how long has this been, have we been aware of this rail issue?
So this came out of the construction last year and we've been working on a solution for it. So it is something that we identified and that we budgeted. I'm not quite aware of the concern about the four year, which I'm assuming you're, you're referring to the.
But the dry rot hangars.
Yeah, that, I mean, basically we, we were notified by AMG in November of last year and we took action in December. So I, I don't know that we had any awareness for a four year.
That is not my understanding. I've heard that it was reported for two or three years prior to that time.
The first time it was reported to Kevin or I was in November of last year.
Okay, are we ready for page eleven? Page eleven, I've got a question on the last item. Why did the price go up on the dynamic message signs?
What was the question?
Why did the price go up on the dynamic message signs? From a hundred thousand budget to two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, that's what it costs.
So there's a mistake on the budget.
Yeah, there's a mistake on the budget. So we have two-hundred thousand budgeted and the costs are two-twenty-five hundred. I think there was just a, an error in some actions. So we actually include, what, what this includes, the total cost, we just did a, a.
What's that?
A procurement of the, the pole for the dynamic message sign. And so that cost for the procurement of the pole is rolled into this two-twenty-eight. So that's what it is.
The budget was two hundred, it wasn't one hundred. Okay.
So we'll, we'll correct this and for next time. And we still don't have final cost on that, so we procured the sign, we procured the pole. We still have to release a construction contract out to bid to actually build all of it. Race against the clock trying to get that underway as soon as possible for the summer season.
Where's it gonna be located?
It's gonna be on Auburn Way South, just east of the bridge, the R Street Bridge, up the hill a little bit towards the, the Beagle Hall. Right side as you're heading out of there.
One question's on eleven, Bill. Obama, twelve, I'm sorry. Sidewalk repairs. Do you folks have a schematic on where all these sidewalks are for, that you're gonna repair for two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars?
For this, yes, we do.
You do? Is it in, it's not in this package though? So I'd like to. I think all, all of the.
I'd like to see that.
Council ought to have a copy of that in their buds.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, sure. Okay, now we're ready for the PIP. You know, we're running pretty late here, so I don't think we wanna get into too much.
James is gonna make it really fast.
We can, we can always come back, you guys. If you don't get satisfied with everything, I can bring you back.
Well, and. So I do, do wanna clarify, so this is our first look at the tip. We will actually be back on the twelfth as well with the more detailed full package. So this is kind of that first blush, get your input before we put together that whole package.
So how do you wanna go through this, through memo or through the actual contracts?
Council, Deputy Mayor, James Webb, City Traffic Engineer. This is really high level, we can do this in five minutes. As our optimism. Every year, as required by the RCWs, we have to go through the process to update the tip. Tip is the list of short range transportation projects that the city would like to accomplish. The first three years are financially constrained, we can only program money that we have available to spend. Years four, five, and six do not have to be financially constrained. We can plan on future grant money, future funding sources. We can spend more than we technically have right now. The memo just sets out a list of the projects that we're proposing to remove from the tip as part of this.
Completions, I guess.
Sorry?
They're all just completions, aren't they?
Yeah, these are projects that are all anticipated to be completed by the end of this year. A lot of them are projects that you've been talked to about earlier this evening. So there's seven total projects that are gonna be removed because they're completed for a total of just over sixteen and a half million dollars. On the second page of the memo, there are two new projects that we're proposing to add to the tip. Both of these are projects that are included in the comprehensive transportation plan in one form or another. The comp plan includes the Auburn Way South project as the entire completion of the corridor from Hemlock where the five lane section has been completed. That was CP eleven eighteen and twelve eighteen that was completed last year, all the way out to the city limit. That total is about a sixty million dollar project. So we're breaking it into smaller pieces, so it's easy to find funding for. The first one of those will extend those, that five lane section, all those half-street improvements from Hemlock to Poplar.
How far is that distance from Hemlock to Poplar?
Hemlock to Poplar is about just over point four of a mile.
Point four of a mile for twenty million dollars?
We have to buy a lot of right of way, is that what you're referencing?
Yeah, there's a, a lot of right of way. And right now that roadway is two slash three lanes. So to build it out to five lanes and put in sidewalks, curb and gutter, storm drainage, lighting, street trees, everything else is required to build that out to our standards. It's a twenty million dollar price tag.
Is the M, is the M Street any drive on to contribute?
We are hoping that we will be able to partner with them on funding this. And.
I can add to that. So the, the first step to that is getting it more identified in the tip as well as in the T twenty forty PSRC tip because this is federally classified arterial as well. So it needs to be in that program side on the T twenty forty plan. So that's part of what we have done in breaking these to smaller chunks is to get at least this first piece into the T twenty forty plan so that in twenty eighteen, when the next grant round comes around, we can actually go after grant funds for this and in the meantime be working with MIT on potential partnerships for it.
Can you get right of way money out of that kind of grant source?
For, with federal funds, yes. As long as we're on the program side, right now with where this project is at in T twenty forty, we can only get planning money. So we're trying to get this piece into a program side so that we can actually get design and right of way.
Are you getting state money also?
So we can, we can apply for state money, but the first step is really to go after federal money. The, the state grants that we have available for this type of roadway is really through TIB and, and they really like to be kind of the last ones in. They don't like to necessarily fund that design and right of way phase.
The second project is the eight street loop extension, which would extend A Street Southwest where it kind of does the whiffed you do and then turns back and goes north as the South End of Division Streets.
Is that a technical?
That is a very technical turn.
Okay, I like it.
So this would create a new one-way westbound connection from the southeast corner of that loop directly to A Street Southeast.
It's a right only turn?
It would be a right only turn onto southbound A Street. And that would also be a complete street, including pedestrian and potentially bicycle connection as well. The reason that we're adding that to the tip right now is that we're hoping that we can have Sam Transit. can have Sam Transit, um, participate in the funding of that project as part of the access improvements, as part of the second Sam Transit parking garage. The other change that we're proposing, oh, and the, um, the draft tip sheets that are included behind the memo give you a more detailed breakdown of the costs and a, and a map showing you the project limits for both of these two projects. The, the other modification we're proposing is, we have two projects on the tip right now, which kind of encompass very similar improvements. One is a corridor improvement, um, which would build out the M Street southeast corridor from Eighth Street southeast to Albany South. The other project is to construct a new traffic signal at the intersection of M Street southeast and Twelfth Street southeast, which is part of that corridor. Based on how those projects are timed in the existing tip, I think there's a one-year difference between the signal and the corridor improvements. We thought it made a lot of sense to just bring the signal in to part into the bigger corridor construction project and consolidate it and do it all at once.
So, how long is it, about, maybe six blocks, or?
Um, from Eighth to Albany South is, what is it, uh, seventeenth? This is about seven, eight or nine blocks.
You don't have a map?
Not for that one, because it's an existing, they're both existing projects in the tip, so no, there isn't a map for that one. Only the new ones.
So, you think we're gonna remember that?
There'll be a map as part of the tip that has all the projects shown on it.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question not related to this, this package? Are we done with the package? Oh, we're not done with the tip yet. Oh, okay.
So, um, we're currently working on updating all of the projects in the tip. So, we'll be back to, uh-
June twelfth.
June twelfth for a second study session review, um, and then there'll be, uh, we've, we've met with the Transportation Advisory Board already with these, these changes. We're gonna be going back to the tab for a second meeting with them, and then there'll be the, uh, setting the public hearing, holding the public hearing, and adoption of the final document by council.
Will you be doing the spreadsheet that we usually see that gives more idea of timing?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Uh, the whole of the tip will be updated, so yeah, that's part of that.
Any other questions? Not on the tip. Yeah, I guess we're done with you guys on the tip. Go ahead, go ahead. Just a general question on repairing roads. Over on Riverview Drive northeast, between Fourteenth and Twenty-second, it's all newly paved. What was that? Construction under what, what, uh, area?
I believe that was part of our local street program. There has also been, at different times, uh, some levy work being done by King County Flood Control District in that area. But I believe that the actual paving was, was a local street improvement that was probably two years ago.
Recently, the striping, everything is, everything is, it's a new pavement, new blacktop on the riverside.
Yeah.
From about, from about Fourteenth to, to Twenty-second. It's just on one, one half of the road.
On which road, Bill?
Riverview Drive.
Yeah, so if it's, if it's only one half, then it's most likely related to the, uh, levy work that they have been using.
So, it wasn't our money? So, it wasn't our money, then?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to, um, other discussion items. Going once, going twice, moving on to new business. A matrix. Yes, Councilmember Pelosi.
I'd like to speak on the matrix.
Please.
I was looking at the council matrix, particularly, uh, the municipal services part of it, which is on page forty-three. But then, I looked over on page forty-two, and I'm seeing that the meeting dates for municipal services are running eight to nine weeks. That is too long. We knew that, it was gonna be two months between meetings. That's eight to nine weeks. It's not working, I guess that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. I think it should be at least four weeks. That would double our number of meetings.
Not unless we did two content areas at each meeting. Like, tonight, we would-
I don't, I don't think that we're getting work done fast enough.
If you recall, the decision was that if something needed to be brought forward sooner, it could go under the general topic discussion. It did not have to wait for the special focus area to come in.
Yep.
And we had that example tonight of that various topic.
Thank you. Do you wanna put it on the agenda to discuss some more?
Well, it's, doesn't this come up each time?
Well, I have, I hear one person who's having a problem regarding the frequency. Does anybody else wanna look at the frequencies of these special focus groups?
I would, I talked to Mr. Pelosi about this. I also would like to know if we could, um, have more frequent with the human services, you know, 'cause it is, I won't have a meeting until July tenth, is the next time I will be able to bring anything up.
Councilmember Holman.
If something critical comes up between now and July tenth, move to put it on, uh, on general topics. Like, tonight, uh, agenda item three was the Deputy Mayor Selection Ad hoc Committee Report. That's not a public works topic, but it got on this agenda. So, if something from your committee is of critical importance, move it to have, be on a, a, a general topic, uh, as was item three tonight.
Or you can swap it with somebody else.
That swapping kinda get, got me all confused, uh, because I get this four-week set, and then I, I see that somebody's, and then I'm having a hard time tracking, so, um- I like it better with the idea where we take those critical ideas and add them, as opposed to, um, swapping the whole content area, 'cause I, it throws me off stride, but... Uh, Councilmember Pelosi.
The other, when we used to be on, uh, regular committees every two weeks, um, it seemed that we used to have more feedback from staff. I don't feel that the council member of the chair or vice chair should have to dream up all of the agenda items. Previously, staff would bring significant stuff, agenda items, to, to the different committees.
Councilmember, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry for-
So, John and the mayor, and I, maybe you did too, Bob. Well, bring it up, bring it up, well. I'd like to see more staff bring up agenda items.
Councilmember Wagner.
Well, and that idea, Bill, I kinda like the idea of the chair meeting the staff in a separate meeting, just, and maybe the vice chair too. But the chair and the staff, the staff, 'cause when I had sat down with staff to plan this agenda, it was very helpful to just find out what was going on. And I, so I feel what you're feeling, and I don't get in such contact with staff as I like about public works and community development. But I think what I'd like to do is think about having a regularly scheduled every two weeks with the particular staff that applies some area that I'm chairing. What, what would you think about that idea?
I even thought of that, too.
That's great.
That it would be nice to be able to sit down with, uh, the human services and before we can, you know, and, and sit down and strategize what it is that they want us to bring forward and everything, and be able to have that dialogue with them. Here, I don't, I haven't had that with them.
Council-
You've reached out to them, and maybe I need to do this, the same.
Councilmember DeCarce.
Maybe we need to have the chair and the vice chair present at those meetings.
Yeah.
You know, for a lot of, a lot of reasons, actually, with the backup and also for the information. And I, I think, and I was thinking about this earlier, where looking at the dates and moving them more frequently, it basically requires doubling up at each study session, which would pretty much require us to look at modifying things like presentations, which could possibly only take place at the fifth study session, so, or whenever it could take place. I, I like the concept of meeting with staff, you know, on a periodic basis, you know, maybe, say every two weeks, but meeting with staff on a periodic basis to go through this, and I think that's where the dialogue interchange can take place to add or delete or whatever needs to happen for the agenda items for that special focus area. So, I think more dialogue in that informal process can lead us to better information in the formal process.
Councilmember Wagner.
And I think you'll, with that regularly scheduled periodic meeting, you'll be able to identify critical items that need to come into the general discussion, which I think we haven't had a very good mechanism to do, or-
We haven't used the general discussion very much, so I think you're right, we can do that.
So, Yolanda, who would you meet with on human services? Dana.
Is Erica and Dana?
It would be Dana. Okay, would you, um, when you set that up, I'd like to see human services grant parameters for twenty nineteen, twenty twenties, I've got it written down, put on the list, and staff resources for regional domestic violence committees. I'll, I'll just give this to you.
Okay.
But I, I remember back in the old days, which weren't so long ago, when I did finance, and I really did like meeting one-on-one with Shelley. So, I think that you do get some long-range planning, you get really, yeah, so I think that's a-
You have to prepare for it, yes.
I think that's a good suggestion, thank you. Who did you meet with?
Kevin and, Jeff and-
Okay.
And so, like you said, there's a lot of interchange, so it's great. And I'll get them involved.
Uh, Councilmember Pelosi.
Under municipal services-
Yep.
I'd like to add the following agenda items.
Okay, and that's the yellow.
Yeah, the yellow, salmon, whatever. Auburn Airport briefing, Auburn Airport briefing, and district, district court briefing. District court briefing.
Okay. So, when you say briefing, what is it that you want?
I wanna know what's going on at the, I want other, I want council to know what's going on at the airport, and also at the district court.
When we met with, um, the police chief, he shared with us, um, some of the new things that they're doing, and some of the challenges they're facing as they're trying to deal-
Interesting for the council.
Are there any other, um, issues?
I think the, the, the dates for public works in communities at all, I think, you did this one, you know, not on that date schedule.
I've got a problem with the, well, tonight I was supposed to be doing something with my, um, segment, but there's nothing much.
Okay, so, we, we gotta continue to work together. This is in, in its infancy, and that's why I appreciate comments, Bill, the notion that we need to have, you know, more frequent, and we reviewed the latitude that we have of adding things, and so, um, I appreciate that. Mayor Backus.
So, we asked that finance and public works be switched, because Finance Director Coleman is not available and wanted to be here for it. So, that went out as a request-
It did.
About two months ago, a month and a half ago, so-
But then I hope that would be updated on this, make it-
Yeah, it should've been updated.
Okay, this was just the regularly scheduled-
We gotta be fluid, we gotta be fluid.
Speaking of which-
Oh, okay, it's time for, uh, any other issues, and we will adjourn. Tonight, adjourn.